Hello, good evening. Welcome to our Thursday evening workshop. We're here with Director Roy. Director Roy, after you.
So tonight, we're going to begin with the in-kind request and the cash request. You had in your packets. So the in-kind request is seven, six thousand four sixty, which is eight thousand two hundred and thirty-three more than last year. Fiscal year twenty-five's total was sixty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-seven, which was twelve thousand three fifty-seven more than fiscal year twenty-four. Fiscal year twenty-four was fifty-five, eight hundred and seventy, which is seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-five more than what was in twenty-three for forty-seven, eight seventy-four. Any discussions on any of the in-kind requests?
Counselor Chinam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These in-kind requests are for services that the city is already paying for, notably personnel and so on, doing jobs specifically for the requestors.
Correct, but there are some permits in there too that would not become.
Permit fees that would be waived?
Yes.
Okay.
There would be permit and park use fees, Counselor Chinam.
So.
Park use fees.
All right.
Would be waived as well as what they were. For the in-kind, those requests are to waive the fees to use the different parks for the various folks that are using. If you look on that, it says park use and you'll see some say two hundred, three hundred, three thousand for Dempsey. That's the waiving of the park use fees.
Right, but we're also paying officers and public works employees.
That would come out of each department's overtime budget line. I would also add Rally for Recovery. Neglected to put that on the cash request, that would be a fifteen-hundred-dollar request, but that would be coming out of the opioid, yes, Counselor Chinam, would be coming out of the opioid fund. So that wouldn't be actual dollars out of the budget that you'd have to take.
Okay, thank you.
And Rally for Recovery has no in-kind requests. That's just a cash request.
They also have an in-kind request.
Oh, they do.
It's the permits for over in the gazebo, use of the gazebo.
Set up there.
Exactly. Public Works, more of a Public Works setup event.
Thank you. And, and the Public Works budget, LPD and LP Fire Department, all of those requests have already been built into their budgets and their ass at this point, right?
Each department is anticipating these costs being included in their overtime budgets. That's correct.
Right, okay. So we're not going to need to add this in?
No, and I think really the big issue is the cash request is that's really the decision that you folks have to make. I think the in-kind is, we've done most of these, almost all of these, year after year.
Right, yeah. Okay, thank you Administrator O'Malley. Counselor Herrmann?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to express my support for all of the in-kind requests. I think they're, they're all worthy, worthy events and causes that we've supported for a while and they, they do a lot for the city. So I definitely support all those and then we'll, we'll talk about the cash requests.
Yeah, and you know, when we look at the in-kind requests, I mean, we're really looking at the, the summer schedule for Lewiston, you know, between the Dempsey and Liberty Festival, et cetera. So, yeah, I urge the councilors to get behind this. Any, any concerns about the, any in-kind request? I guess we're.
So next is the cash request, which was also in your packet. Andrews Goggan Historical Society is requesting ten thousand. City of Lewiston is requesting ten thousand for the balloon festival. Lake Stewards of Maine is requesting one thousand five hundred. Lewiston Farmer Market is requesting ten thousand. Lewiston Summer Fun and Films is requesting ten thousand. If you remember, he was here on Tuesday night because he could not come tonight. And the Liberty Festival is requesting fifteen thousand. There is already ten thousand in the budget for the Liberty Festival, Festival as every year. So I believe she's requesting an additional five.
Is the balloon, thank you Director Roy, is the balloon festival already in the budget, like the Liberty or no?
No.
Okay, all right. At this point, I guess I would just like to go through one by one. We can give each of the representatives a minute to come to the back podium and say something. But, yes, Counselor Roy? Or Counselor Saul?
I just want to make, these requests going to come from the fund balance? Is that?
Excuse me?
These requests, the cash requests will come out of the fund balance?
No, it will go in the, the budget. You can request that it comes out of the fund balance, but it would go into the actual operating and then you can request that it come out of the fund balance when we go over the fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Chinam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in the budget already, we have United Ambulance. United Ambulance at three hundred and sixty thousand. The Liberty Fest is already budgeted at ten thousand. That's included. Flags for the Memorial Day in the Cemetery is eight thousand and the Snowmobile Club automatically gets excess tax revenues. Is that a state law? Is that a, okay?
So the state sends us the check and then we send it to them.
All right. And do we have a choice in that or is that already dictated by other forces?
I believe it's, it's a requirement.
Okay, all right. Just, just clarifying. And that's forty-four eighty-two?
Yes.
So those four items together total to three thousand, three hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars that are in the budget. And then we have additional requests for forty-six thousand five hundred that are listed on the, on the attached page. I just want to make sure I'm understanding properly.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Najin?
Just to come back and clarify, so it's actually, the sheet that we're looking at is forty-six thousand five hundred because ten thousand has already been assigned to Liberty Fest?
Ten thousand is already in for the Liberty Fest.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, okay. Do we have anyone here from Andrews Goggan Historical Society? Perfect. We don't have a timer running, but, but I have a clock up here. So we'll give everyone two or three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Becky Conrad. I do some fundraising support for the Andrews Goggan Historical Society and our vice chair Penny Joseph is with us as well. As you know, the Historical Society made a transformational move from the third floor of the county courthouse in Auburn to ninety-three Lisbon Street three years ago, which you folks supported generously and we appreciate that very much. The expressed purpose for that move was to become part of the fabric of the community, to have a storefront presence and to be very part of your downtown. And this request is to allow for some programming, to continue to bring foot traffic into the building as well as letting the society move out into the community with other kinds of programming, especially school programming. They would be using some of the funding to do kits for the K to twelve curriculum. They'd like to develop with all of the schools in the community. We are really at a point where opening the doors is literal. Having that space activated is a benefit to the downtown, to Lisbon Street. It brings a lot of traffic from local folks. It brings traffic from out of state. They have a guestbook where the registry is sometimes even international folks. So it's, we view it as both a community asset as well as an economic development asset. The programming would support talks, lectures, programs mostly for children on Saturdays. They'd like to establish a really robust program and they also bring a lot of homeschool programs in. So it is, in summary, it is, would be an investment in the downtown to help the programming become more robust at the society. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Do we have questions for Andrews Goggan Historical Society? Yes, Counselor Herrmann?
Thank you. I guess it could be a question for Director Roy as well. And just because I can't remember, did we do any cash donation last year to the Historical Society?
No, there was only two that you funded. One was the recovery for rally and then the movies for five thousand.
Okay.
The summer, the Lewiston summer.
All right, thanks.
Yes, Counselor Saul?
Nevermind, I'm sorry. I don't have a question.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you so much. Or Counselor Najin, did you have a question?
Yeah, just really quickly, when I look at the revenues versus the expenditures, it looks like you're running with a, with an offset of thirty-five thousand dollars in, in, in the red. Is that correct?
The budget accounted for a staff position that hasn't been hired yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Or wait, Counselor Saul, did you have your hand up again or? Oh, okay, all right. Thank you, Becky. I guess we'll just continue talking and seeing how councilors feel about this item. Thoughts, Counselor Chinam, yes?
First, in full disclosure, I had, had been extremely active with the Andrews Goggan Historical Society. I served as its treasurer for eight years and president for two years. My involvement now consists entirely of being a member of the organization. I wanted to let all the council members or remind all the council members that that's my relationship with AHS. It is certainly a worthy cause and I support the donation of ten thousand dollars to the Historical Society. I believe its presence on Lisbon Street is a benefit to the area and certainly worthwhile.
I agree that Historical Society has been an added benefit to Lewiston. They've been doing art walks. I see Tis Crowley dressed up there from time to time. And, yeah, they're running a genealogy programs on the weekend, et cetera. Absolutely. I'm not sure that I'm in favor of a full ten, but I guess where are other councilors feeling at this moment? Counselor Saul, yes?
I'm looking at the whole list and there's a couple that I, I think definitely need to happen. As much as I want to say yes to the Historical Society, I think I would probably pass on that this year.
Any other thoughts from, from councilors at this point? Counselor Glant?
Thank you, Mayor. I support them all. Quite frankly, at twenty-two thousand per penny, it's going to cost us two cents to fund all these things that we could definitely use as part of community development. So I know that we're all trying to watch our nickels and dimes and even pennies, but I, you know, I would let you all know that I believe anything we do in Lewiston to attract people and to support our citizens, it's very, very important. And two cents, quite frankly, on a person's tax bill, in my opinion, is not astronomical.
Counselor Najin?
I hold a similar opinion to Counselor Glant. I would ask that any of the sponsors, organizations that are sponsored by the city, find ways to work with the city for promotion and then also promote the city as well. And so that we're working together with our limited resources in order to bring people into our community for the benefits that we offer. And so I would just, you know, highlight that point, but I am completely comfortable with what is actually a pretty modest ask, as long as we're working together to promote the good things that are happening in our community.
Director Roy, just a quick question here. In, in a past budget meeting, we, we found some extra money from fuel cells or, fuel sales or something that wasn't going to cost us as much. Am I remembering that correctly?
It's a hundred and fourteen thousand savings.
Okay, all right. So at this point, even if we ended up approving all of this, it, it would not increase the, the tax rate that we proposed before?
Correct.
Yes, okay.
And that's before the cuts?
Yes, yes, we still have plenty of budget workshops to go. Counselor Glant, did you have something?
Nope, I'm just agreeing.
Okay. I, I guess where do, where do councilors, I mean, we can always come back to this at the end. Any further thoughts on Historical Society? Yeah, Counselor Najin?
I was just going to say before we move, like, if we were going to approve as a slate or something like that, I do know that people showed up to speak to their particular programs and I would love to allow them to do that, so.
Yeah, we most certainly will be allowing everyone to, to speak for the rest of these. Yeah. Yeah, all right. Any further thoughts about Historical Society? Okay, balloon festival. Do we have somebody here?
Yes, you do. That's going to be put on by the city again this year. I have spoken to Phil Crowe, who is the city manager over in Auburn. As they have historically done, they're going to give ten thousand dollars towards this event, so we need that as well, so we can begin the process. Our hope is in the next couple of weeks that we'll be announcing the balloons, the theme, those kind of things, putting out for dates, volunteers. So this is just kind of seed money to get us up and running. We're going to do as we did last year, looking for folks to sponsor the stage, different, different things throughout the, the weekend. So we're looking forward to having another successful balloon festival this year.
Yes, Counselor Chinam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see the 2024 budget in it, indicated at the bottom of that that the fundraising gap was a hundred and forty-three thousand. Was, was much of that made up? Was all of it made up? How did?
Much of it was made up. I mean, we were able to get, and we're going to be applying again for the main tourism loan, I mean, a grant for sixty thousand dollars. So we're, we're hopeful that we do as well as we did last year with what we did for fundraising.
I know last year this council individually gave, donated private donations to the balloon festival, it being the first time that it was the Lewiston Auburn Balloon Festival as opposed to Great Falls. Can you tell me, the forty thousand dollar private donation, was that line met, exceeded? Did we have a long way to go on that? How much private donation money should we be looking for this year?
I'd like to get as much as we could.
Oh, that's a great answer, yeah.
So the, the council put aside a hundred thousand dollars. It was not used. It was moved back in to the general fund. So that is in the general fund currently. We have revenues over the expenditures of fifty-two thousand, which is in its own bank account, collecting its own interest. So we did not need that portion that the city council put aside. Due to Director Libby going for that grant and receiving that grant, along with all of the other revenues that came in, we ended up with fifty-two thousand in good.
I was under the impression that individual councilors, as a group, that we all contributed to.
Donated, correct.
Yes, so that's part of the, the operating costs and/or the fifty-two thousand dollar overrun?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Further comments about the balloon festival? Counselor Najin?
So in this budget, is there a, in the budget for the balloon fest, right? Because I imagine there's a separate budget for it?
Yes, that's last year's budget that we presented to you. So we're, we've just started meeting, so we're going to start gearing that all.
So the budget's not formed yet? I got you.
Correct.
And that fifty-two thousand that's available will be used to offset some of that budget as well?
Yes.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Okay, do, yes, Counselor Chinam, did you have something else?
Thank you. Counselor Najin, that raises a great question. This was the last year's budget. Do we expect that the expenditures for the balloon festival will be significantly different than last year?
Well, some of it we used. We had to purchase some tents that were going to be to reuse, that we had to replace some of the older, I guess, equipment that we got from the balloon festival. So we're going to be reusing a lot of that stuff that we purchased last year. So my hope is we're not going to have so much capital expense involved in this year's event.
Okay, but the operational costs and the event costs are pretty much on par with?
Yes.
Last year.
Right, and a lot of that is public works, is doing a lot more work. The police department, those type of expenses have gone up a little bit, but it's what you're approving in the in-kind.
Thank you.
We are now up to Lake Stewards of Maine. Do we have anyone? Yes, perfect.
Hi, thanks for having me here tonight. My name is Christine Garrett. I'm with Lake Stewards of Maine. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit based out of Auburn, but we operate statewide. We, the Lake Stewards of Maine, are a lake-focused organization that has been in existence for over fifty years. We started out as a program underneath the Department of Environmental Protection, but during the budget shortfalls in the nineties, we were spun off into an independent nonprofit. So we are the DEP's training arm for water quality and training across the state. We also train in aquatic invasive plant and other species identification. And we also train volunteers to take watershed assessment data and to collect ice-out data, which tells us a lot about what is happening with our lakes and the effects of shortening ice seasons on our lakes. So we train, we train volunteers all across the state at no cost to the public volunteer. And this data helps, helps us establish baselines on lakes to determine, you know, what's happening with them. It's a little bit like getting a checkup from your GP. We take your levels and, and, and we couldn't do that without a very broad base of volunteers because the, the state of Maine has over six thousand lakes and ponds, four of which are here, right in the town of Lewiston, and one of which over in Auburn is where Lewiston gets its drinking water. So we currently have twelve hundred volunteers monitoring about five hundred lakes across the state in either water quality, aquatic invasive species, or both. And every year we train volunteers to do this work and it is the most cost-effective method of lake monitoring that you can have. So we are respectfully requesting fifteen hundred dollars from the city of Lewiston to support this program. Your contribution helps us to provide continuing free training and resources to protect Maine lakes because those lakes are our drinking water. They are our recreational sources. They provide hunting and fishing opportunities and, and they're just beautiful gems. People like spending time outdoors on the water. And so we hope that the citizens of Lewiston will stand by us and ensure that lakes remain healthy, clean and accessible for everyone. If you are interested in more information, obviously I'm here to answer questions. We also have two websites. One called Lake Stewards of Maine, which is dedicated to our stewards and information about becoming a volunteer. And the other lakes of Maine carries all of the data that we have or that our partners collect on, on lakes in Maine. So you can find water quality data there, plant data there, loon count from Audubon is hosted there. So all of this information is available online. Thank you for considering our request and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yes, thank you. So does Auburn contribute or Portland or what are their, I guess, what are some of the other larger municipalities that contribute?
Sure. So this is actually our first year reaching out to towns. We had gone to the state, you know, we're a statewide organization. We are funded largely through both state funding and, and foundation grants as well as individual funding donations. We went to the state and we said, you know, costs are going up. We are trying to expand. And the legislature asked us, have you exhausted all revenues, including asking individual towns, if they could support this? And so we said, we have not. We will go ask individual towns.
Thank you. Further questions? Counselor Saul?
Hi, how are you doing? Do you ever do any fundraisers?
Yes, we do, yeah. We are constantly, we have a development team currently out there trying to raise funds for this program. We do not want to have to charge the public. We want this to be free to the volunteers. So we are trying to exhaust all avenues.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Counselor Najin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really quickly, I, I don't know if we got the answer about whether or not you've, Auburn is contributing at all?
Oh, we haven't asked yet.
You haven't asked yet?
Because they have not.
Done their nonprofit piece for the, for their budget, okay?
I believe not.
Fantastic. I would highly suggest, as you know, there are nine bodies of water that enjoy a waiver of filtration from the EPA in the state of Maine out of fifty in the entire country. It's a uniquely Maine institution. When I worked with the working group for We Protect Lake Auburn, Lake Stewards of Maine was incredibly helpful with baseline information and also best practices. Gave me a lot of information, so I knew what I was talking about when I was referring to lake quality. I would suggest that you heavily lean on any community that depends on the waiver from filtration to reduce costs for their drinking water. And I love what you do, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Counselor Chinam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to express my appreciation for the work that you do on No Name Pond, which is near and dear to my heart. You have been monitoring at No Name Pond for decades, if I'm not mistaken. And that water quality information, although it was somewhat distressing this year, is an invaluable resource to the No Name Pond Association and the residents around the area. I would almost be inclined to say that I would suggest that we support Lake Stewards of Maine to the tune of two thousand dollars above, one, five hundred dollars above their request of fifteen hundred. It's a nominal fee and the resources that it provides. It's a nominal fee, and the resources that it provides to us and our only great pond are worth well more than the fifteen hundred dollars they're asking.
Counselor Glant?
Thank you, Mayor. Being somebody you trained, so I'm quite familiar with the program, Silver Lake, Roxbury Pond, I lived there for ten years. And the value here that's being missed is we monitor boats coming into our lakes, and many come from other state, and they bring a lot of evasive plants and things attached to their motors and parts of their boats that we don't realize that cause us lots of problems. And by training people like myself and other individuals in Maine who volunteer our time, stand around basically at boat ramps and, and watch what comes in and inspect people, it's keeping our, our lakes very pristine and, and keep, plus keeping an eye on how things are. So, I would support the fifteen hundred with no problem, I know what y'all do, have been involved with y'all before in the past, so, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Further questions? I'm sorry, your name again?
Christine Garrett.
Christine, thank you so much, further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments from council about Lake Stewards of Maine? Yes, Counselor Nagin?
While I wholeheartedly agree with the sentiment, I think perhaps we could focus on getting some individual donations to Lake Stewards of Maine as opposed to putting out the, more onto the tax rolls than what they asked for. I also think it wouldn't be a bad idea to reach out to counterparts that we know in different municipal bodies to suggest that support for the organization is very important. And the point that Counselor Glant brings up with invest, in aquatic invasives, entire bodies of water can suffer huge damages due to the aquatic evasives and having people who are able to identify and, and, and put in mediation processes early, save bodies of water, so, one hundred percent agreed.
Further comments? Okay, thank you. All right, Lewiston Farmers Market, who do we have here? Sherry?
Good evening, councilors, mayor.
Can you speak into the mic for friends at home?
Good evening, councilors, mayor, staff. Thank you for your time and consideration of our proposal. My name is Sherry Blumenthal, and I'm the treasurer of the Lewiston Farmers Market Association, and this is John Staples, a longtime vendor and our current board chair. A number of you are familiar with the Lewiston Farmers Market and know that for more than twenty years, we have been a fixture in the community and a part of the landscape of what attracts and keeps people in our city. It is one of the many reasons I continue to build a home and life here with my family. The Lewiston Farmers Market Association, the state nonprofit, is the organizing body of the farmers market. Additionally, we host a range of community programs, activities, and events, and since moving to our location at two Oxford and seventy-five Lincoln Street, have picked up the shared commitment with the city to steward and further the growth of the riverfront. We are listed in the Riverfront Island Master Plan. Our efforts enhance the city's weekend offerings to the tune of about thirteen thousand visits a season, May through November, increase commerce for our local economy, we draw in outside dollars and keep in local dollars, enliven and connect people to our region's unique agricultural heritage, we keep farmers farming, serve as a key access point for Maine grown food and goods, we put healthy food on people's plates, and we maintain and improve the city grounds on which we operate. A number of the, the work we do has been captured in a really beautiful way on the This Is Lewiston campaign, so you can find it there, and we're really grateful for that. Our request today builds on what we are already accomplishing in some exciting ways. Specifically, we are looking to expand our programs for seniors and children and to make significant grounds improvements in service of a more dynamic market setup that achieves the streetscape, that activates the streetscape along Lincoln Street and is more accessible to people using mobility devices, an ongoing challenge of the current setup at two Oxford Street. The visuals we've provided give you a glimpse of what we would like to see happen there. We wanna bring in more people, generate more energy and excitement for the market and the city, while continuing to beautify the section of the riverfront that we currently steward. Funds would be applied to materials for and coordination of grounds improvement and supplies and administration for expanded programs. These programs include a new partnership with the Maine Federation of Farmers Market to administer the Senior Farm Share Program, offering fifty-dollar vouchers for up to a hundred LA seniors for fresh produce at the market. It would expand our Kids Club Program to operate almost the full season and a monthly midweek evening market featuring distinct vendors and entertainment. The updated budget I've provided also highlights the line items where the funds would be applied. It's a little bit upgraded from the one originally in the packet. And this infusion of resources with long, you know, we see having long-term outcomes for the market and the city, and we're excited to continue to collaborate with the city, particularly the Department of Public Works, to carry out this vision. So, thank you.
Questions for the farmers markets? Counselor Chidham?
Thank you, Ms. Blumenthal, have you had any interaction with the Public Health Committee?
Not in a long time.
I would suggest that you make a, a point of visiting one of their meetings and perhaps giving a presentation, because the connection between the farmers market and public health is clear. I think it needs to be reinforced, and, and one avenue for you to do that would be through the Lewiston Area Public Health Committee. So, I'd encourage you to get in touch with them and see what you can do to give them a presentation, to spread the word.
Yes, Counselor Nagin?
Obviously, the Lewiston Farmers Market is near and dear to my heart. I volunteered some time there and also worked for the organization for quite a while. I would ask, going forward, that if you have the opportunity, in advance, to maybe email the councilors on, 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 on group workdays. I'm not saying they'll show up necessarily, but some probably will, and they'll definitely spread the word as well.
Well, it's a good thing you said something, cause Sunday, April twenty-seventh, from one PM to four PM, there is a work day.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Yeah, I know, miss many farmers markets, and it's a real gem in our city. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're up to, well, Summer Fund Films, we've heard from Officer Detective Phil Pahn on Tuesday. Yes, Counselor Glant?
I could speak to that if you'd like, Mayor.
Yeah, feel free, counselor.
I made three of the activities last year. I think something that's missed here, if we're talking about the collaborative of, of having people come to town, probably twenty-five percent of the people who come, come from Auburn, come from Lisbon, surrounding areas. Many come here, eat, and then come and watch a film. So, it's not just a local thing, it's really much broader, and I think it's a very worthwhile, if you had a chance to go at all last year. They're very interactive, their kids are excited, and they're very well policed. Not sent, in the sense of police, in the sense of the fact that parents who go there take care of their kids and, and the people who sponsor and do all the activities on the outer circle, from giving away pencils and things for schools, or just information for parents on how to parent, is highly valuable. So, that's why I supported it last year, and I highly support it again this year.
I agree wholeheartedly, during some of the, some of the events there, upwards of, I think, of two thousand people there? And so, it's, yeah, widely attended. Counselor Herrmann?
Thank you, I just wanted to express my support as well. We're, we're always looking for more productive and positive things for kids to be doing. So, this definitely fits that bill. And I also just wanna encourage for future years to maybe, if it's going to be, you know, if it's associated with the police department as a community outreach sort of event, to maybe build it into the police budget, at least some of it, maybe not the entire budget, the entire Summer Fund and Films budget, but I think there could be a place in the police budget to, to contribute a little bit, as, as well as the in-kind contributions or the, I suppose it might also be personal time from many of the officers who are there. But, yeah, definitely support this as well.
Counselor Nagin?
Just as a comment on that, I know that it was set up as a nonprofit organization in order to actually keep the, the financing demand off the police budget and then also to allow for donations. So, I think that's why it's structured the way it is at the moment. The one point I would make, and unfortunately Detective Phil Pahn's not here to hear it, but is if we could get to a point where we have maybe one or two more of these a year, that'd be fantastic. And I know it requires more funds, and I know it requires more, more time, but I, I think that these programs are so, you know, integral to, to youth activity and family-supported activity in the city. Hopefully, if the Sunnyside Park Field gets fixed, that could be a place that we can have one of them. But, you know, at the end of the day, I think, you know, one, one or two more of these events during the course of a summer won't, you know, won't, won't spoil the kids, so.
Further comments on that, councilors? Up to Liberty Fest?
Good evening, I'm Kathy McDonald, and I have Marcus Tellerico here with me. We are both part of the Liberty Festival. The Liberty Festival organization was formed in nineteen ninety-seven after the J.C.'s stopped running the event that they had for many, many years. Our mission is to provide a community celebration along the banks of the Andrus Goggin. The festival is an example of two communities working and celebrating our country's independence together. On the fourth, with our rain date being the fifth, we celebrate on both sides of the river with entertainment and family-friendly activities, beginning around four PM. And at nine thirty is the much anticipated fireworks display along the banks, where you can sit anywhere along the river, and then there's areas around Lewiston Auburn that you can also still see the fireworks. If there's no need for a rain date, then we plan on the fifth to still provide this year, which we did last year, entertainment and again, family-friendly activities in the Veterans Park from four to ten, with great music, dancing, and community fellowship. And then on the sixth, we plan on celebrating our veterans and our community heroes with a salute to the American flag and a retirement ceremony. And on that event, we're hoping to feature the one hundred ninety-fifth Maine Army National Guard Band again this year. Our budget is just under thirty-six thousand dollars. We do fundraising at a couple of events, at our own event at the Liberty Festival, and then we run a food booth at the balloon festival. And we also solicit businesses and other individuals for sponsorship as well. Fireworks costs have gone up twenty-five percent this year, so that was the reason for our increase in asking for funding. We do everything we can, we're a small group, we do everything we can to try to raise the money and not have to ask for any more than we have to ask for. We are, we have, and we still are very grateful for and appreciative of the city's support of our event. And we look forward to be able to continue this event and celebrate our freedoms and our independence as a great country and show off our community.
Thank you so much. Yes, Counselor Soul?
Hi, thanks for coming. I just wanted to share that I'm in full support of this. I think it's a fantastic event, I, especially this year, it's two hundred and fifty year celebration, so. Yay, United States. So, yeah, I, I'm in full support of this.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Chidham?
Thank you, Ms. McDonald, for all of your efforts in this regard over the years. The Liberty Festival is a wonderful salute to liberty. My only complaint, and it will continue to be a complaint, is the fireworks. There is a large segment of our population that goes away because of post-traumatic stress disorder, disturbance it has on animals. Fireworks are not enjoyed by many people in our population, and I would very strongly encourage you, particularly in light of the rise, increase in costs in fireworks, is to consider developing a program that does not include fireworks. Thank you.
So, to answer that, I, I realize there are a lot of people that do not like fireworks. I have a couple of animals that aren't too keen to them either, and hide in the basement, and I get that. But, if you attend the event and you see the number of people that do come and do appreciate that we do it and really enjoy the fireworks. We have, Marcus looked into a drone display, and the cost of that was much higher than the fireworks, and for a very short time, for like a seven to ten minute display, so much shorter. And not seen throughout different areas of the city, or you'd have to be at the falls.
Counselor Herrmann?
Thank you, I'm one of those people that Counselor Chidham talks about, but I know how many thousands of people do love the fireworks, so, you know, I'm resigned to them being there. I do wonder if you have looked into, I, I don't know much about them, but I've heard of some fireworks that have been designed so that they're quieter, they still provide the same visual effect. I don't know if you've looked into that and what the cost comparison is or the availability, but just one other option that could be considered.
Counselor Nagin?
Just real quick, I know that the fireworks display brings people in from other communities as well. People come into the city to see the fireworks. In the past couple of years, actually, the, the amount of people who have come in, in my neighborhood, I live very close to the Upper Falls, has increased, which is nice to see. People like, actually like kinda doing like a little bit of a, what do you call it? When you, tailgate, tailgating like for the fireworks on the street. That's, that's kind of a cool thing, that we used to see quite a bit, and it's kinda come back a little bit, so that feels nice. Just to speak to the firework piece, we all know when it's gonna happen, so people who have aversion to the fireworks can choose to remove themselves from the situation. I think the bigger issue overall for the city is that for the week or two leading up to Fourth of July and throughout the summer, fireworks just kinda go off in the city randomly. And so, I think that's more of a concern than, than a planned firework display. But, I'm all in favor, I always think this event, event is, is worthwhile, and I'm glad that you've got a dedicated crew that are, that's working to make sure that it continues, so, thank you.
Thank you. We have been extremely fortunate for the number of years that with the number of people that we have there, we have not had really any incidents that required police attention or, you know, we've had one or two minor injuries that, you know, you'd need the ambulance who was there to help, but those were, you know, not anything caused by the crowd being there or anything. So, we're very fortunate, and the community comes together in a great way. And it's good to see that everyone's getting along and we're having a great time and celebrating together. We do have several food trucks that participate as well, and we have nonprofits also that participate that do some, some of their major fundraising at the event.
You know, certainly, the balloon festival is our largest event in terms of people, far and away, but after that, it's probably Liberty Festival. The place is normally jam-packed downtown by the bridge, and then there's, you know, as Counselor Nagin just mentioned, people all over town watching from wherever they are. So, yeah, thank you so much, both of you. And thank you for making taco salads. You mentioned a fundraiser, one of the fundraisers they do is they run a booth at the balloon festival, and their veggie taco salad is delicious.
So, if you haven't tried one of our taco salads, please do. They are great.
All right, further questions for Kathy, councilors? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. So, just hearing from the, listening to the council as we've moved along here, is, is our appetite to just approve all of these things that they requested and asked, or how do people feel about this? Counselor Chidham?
Yes, I think we ought to approve all requests as presented.
Counsel Herrmann?
I agree, I think it's a moderate amount for, for Lewiston to pitch in and can really help our summer events.
Counselor Soul, Counselor Soul, yes?
I feel like I'm always the poo-pooer. So, I do wanna support all of this, I really do. I just also know that we have a really tight budget, and I know it's only pennies, but every penny counts. So, I don't know if it's the, an option to maybe cut some of them in half, like to five thousand? If anyone is open to that, I don't think you will be. I can see it on your faces, so, okay, I concede.
Further, yes, Counselor Nagin?
I, I certainly appreciate the, the suggestion, Counselor Soul, and you're absolutely correct, it is a very tight budget. You know, which makes some of these decisions hard for all of us, I think. But, because these are all community-based focuses, and they give back to the community in ways that, that actually enrich the lives of the citizens who live here. the quality of life overall, in my opinion, I think it's a worthwhile investment when it doesn't get steps and colas and, you know, at the end of the day, like it's, we have two things that I think we need to protect is our employees and our community engagement. And so, you know, those two pieces are the things I'm worried about in this budget. There's other things that I think that we can compromise on in order to reduce the budget.
Yeah, Councilor Sol, go ahead.
I just want to say, I can agree with that. That's fair enough, so.
Thanks. Councilor Glenn.
This is for Director Roy. Would you reach out to Director Libby? It would seem to me that some of these events might fall under a TIF umbrella because they are, in fact, helping the community, doing things, some of the development, and if any of this could be moved into a TIF situation, it would take it off our end and would take it off our plate for years to come. And when I think of the movies, because all the people come, I think of the Andes Goguen, people come for that event, the Liberty, these, a lot of these events are actually events, the balloon festival, that draw people to our community, which is basically an economic boom for the community when they're here. So maybe we can ask him to venture down his road of magic crystal balls, of all the things we can and can't do, and maybe there's some chance before we end this budget season to find out that we can move them someplace that's not going to impact the citizens directly as we're talking here. Thank you.
Councilor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's an excellent idea, Councilor Glenn. However, I think all of the TIF money that's available has already been used for items that are eligible for TIF. If we have more TIF money coming in for other projects, then that would be the time to move some of that money, perhaps if we could, into these economic development drivers. But I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that all of the TIF money has already been allocated to eligible projects. Is that correct, Director Roy?
I believe the other, the TIFs that have been already approved are the new CMP TIF. I'm not familiar with what was submitted to D E C D.
Yes, I mean, we can certainly check with Director Libby to see his thoughts on it. And while I do agree that a lot of these events, you know, generate economic impact for our city, I'm hesitant to think that they would meet the strict definitions of economic development to be put in the TIF, but Director Libby can provide us further guidance on that. Councilor Najin.
Just as a point of clarity, the TIF package actually, for the, for NECA, actually hasn't been approved yet. We've submitted it on the first, right?
Correct.
And so, there was funding cut out in that to support programming just like this. And so I would imagine there would be a budget associated with it for the next year or the year after. So you're absolutely correct. Councilor Glenn, it's definitely something to bring to Director Libby, but I know that that was part of the portion that we approved as well as arts donations, so.
Anything further, Councilor Najin?
That's it. I was just imagining that that TIF hadn't been approved yet, so we couldn't have possibly spent the money yet.
Thank you. Councilor Glenn, did you have something else?
No, sure, sounds good.
Okay. Yeah, so at this point, we are anticipating including all of these in the final budget, both in-kind and the cash request, so thank you all for coming. Feel free to hang out if you wish. Director Roy, what's next?
Next, we're going to go over.
Oh, wait, one second. Administrator Malley?
I was just speaking to a gentleman over here from.
Is there something that we missed?
No, I just wanted to be aware that everyone who was here for any in-kind requests, the city council is approving all of that, so thanks for coming, but you're good.
Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.
So next we'll go.
Director Roy, yes.
We'll go over the miscellaneous on page 74 and 75. The overall increase is 499,589. Just a reminder, we went over the fringe benefits part during the salary. Insurance on page 74 increased 178,895. Non-fringe-related insurance coverages increased 76,444. Increases in all insurance except for the fidelity bond remains flat, and the public officials liability decreased $337. Auto increased 29,380. Property increased 26,937. Our liability increased 16,308, and the inland marine increased 4,156, which is coverage for the movable equipment that can't be classified as vehicles.
Excuse me, one second. Dave, we seem to be getting an echo in here. Can we look into that? Thank you. Sorry, please continue, Director Roy.
Retirement's on page 74, increase of 66,816, all renewed during the first workshop. Workers' comp and unemployment comp on page 75 decreased $880. We already reviewed this on the first workshop also. Just a note that we have requested 200,000 from the fund balance to be allocated to the unfunded liability gap. Dues and donations decreased 6,000. We already went through all of those items, so I'm going to go right to tax sharing in Auburn, which is on page 75, increased 11,000.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Glenn.
I have a question on the retirement.
Yeah, are we at a point where it makes sense to take questions, Director Roy?
Yes.
Councilor Glenn.
Main family medical leave, that's that new one we got stuck with, is that correct?
Correct.
My question is, do we send that money to the state automatically, or do we keep it until it becomes effective in another year?
So we are sending currently anybody who is not in a closed union contract. We are sending those funds, and it is set to go. I know that they've been working on their website, but that will be uploaded, just like any other benefits, monthly to the state, so we do not hold the funds.
All right, good, thank you.
So next, we're going over tax sharing on page 75, increase of 11,162 contingent on the final tax rate. Currently, right now, I have in the 3177 tax rate. This is an agreement with Auburn for the Monty Hydro facility that requires 17.5% sharing of taxes. This was a 50-year agreement which expired around 2035. The valve decreased by about 3 million to 36 million in fiscal year '20. This will be adjusted as we finalize the budget and the tax rate. The increase is from the flat budget of fiscal year '24 and '23 rate. The budget for fiscal year '25 and '24 are the actual, and '26 will be the estimate of what the '25 ends up being. These are numbers that aren't done until the end of the year, in June. Salary reserve is increasing 246,405, which we reviewed earlier. The enterprise has an overall credit in there, 460,800. That is netted against the reserve of 595,000. Other miscellaneous on page 75, increase 3,191. Other fees covers the audit at 35,096, which is just the city's portion, the school is in their budget, which is a full increase of 3,191 due to the federal projects reviews. We had two additional programs that had to be reviewed this year for the CIFA, so we're putting in a little increase to make sure that we have those funds in for next year. Miscellaneous service remains flat. The specialty charges, citywide training, recruiting efforts, and our AFR award and the community forums are in this budget. Any questions on that, any of those, before we move over to revenues?
Councilor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On insurances, how often do we shop insurance?
We are with MMA in a pool with everyone else, so that does not go out to bid. I don't know if they've gone out to bid in the past 10 years.
Is that a requirement? Could we go out and look for insurance on our own, or do we have to be participating in the main municipal pool?
We get a better rate being in the pool than we would, yes, the first year, you usually get good rates when you go out, but then after that, due to them seeing our claims, usually that's when you start getting your increases.
Okay, thank you. And clarify for me, we are self-insured for workers' comp or unemployment or for both? So we have a fund that we maintain for that, and I'm sure there's, there are regulators that look at the size of that fund and our potential liabilities and so on.
Correct. Every year, and I forwarded that report to you, when I received that report, I forwarded it off to all of you for your review, for you to be able to see that.
Okay, and we are obviously being fiscally prudent in that. Are we being as conservative as possible, I think that's the right way I want to go, in keeping that fund as low as we can while still covering our potential liabilities?
We try every year, that's what that 200,000 is put in for from fund balance. Every year, we try to put 200 or 250 in from fund balance to get closer to that liability level that we should be at.
Okay, so we're not there yet, but we're, okay, all right. And who oversees that self-insurance?
We have a company, CCSMI, that oversees that, and that we bid out every year, and we bid out our workers' comp, the individuals who go out for us and do all of the reviews and everything.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Najin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you just refresh my memory, Director Roy? It's 3.4 million dollars that the workman's comp fund is underfunded based on the valuation, is that correct?
Correct. The reserve is about at 3.7. It did lower our loss rate, lowered last year from five point, from 6.1 to 5.1. So we're about 2.5 around.
Two-five short in order to hit, okay, thank you.
Councilor Glenn.
Thank you, Mayor. Bottom line, general fund. Original budget, 64 million, revised is 87 million, and we're going to go from, 83 million, we're going to go from 83 to 68, is that, we, how did we go from 64 to 83, and now we're going to drop back down again? What was going on in that area?
So if you remember, in the, your revised budget always includes all that fund balance that you approved last year. So you, we always look at the original, and that's why when we're doing the comparison for the differences, we look at the original, because that was the original budget. The revised includes all of the fund balance that was approved from last year, along with any projects that had purchase orders open. That rolls into the next year so that they continue to spend off of that purchase order.
All right, thank you.
So revenues are on page 12 and 15. An overall increase of 417,724. Taxes and interest increased 290,764. All in excise tax, we increased that 290,764 with all the new vehicles becoming available for sale with the estimated increase of the MSRP. We are seeing our excise tax continue to come in above budget, so we're estimating that we increase it about 290,764 for next year. We are decreasing the interest for delinquent taxes. The budget is flat as the state rate for fiscal year '22 is at 6%. Fiscal year '23, the rate that was set was 4%, and fiscal year '24, 8%. The state sets the maximum rate due to the Title 36, Section 505.4. We're estimating less tax lanes, so budget, we're budgeting conservatively on that piece. License and permits are on page 12 and 13, increase in 117,35. The largest increase is in the building inspectors fees of 60,000. Other increases are in other license and permits, 22,000, which is for tattoos, bingo, sound amps, and marijuana. Motor vehicle registration fees and electrical license fees both increase in 10,000. Amusement devices and facilities increase in 4,000. Plumbing fees and licenses increase in 3,000. Escavation permits increase in 2,500. Food service establishments and canine registration fees are both increase in 2,000. In-lodge and boarding houses increase in 800. Marriage license increase in 500. Other registration fees increase in 451. These are offset by decreases of 66 dollars in group care facilities and fishing and hunting licenses of 150,000. Any questions on either tax interest or license and permits?
Councilor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With all of the tariffs being imposed and the conventional wisdom is that people are finding it very difficult to purchase cars, has that been factored into the increase in excise taxes for motor vehicles?
No.
I would caution us that we need to be concerned that motor vehicle, new motor vehicle purchases, which are the highest excise taxes, may well diminish, decrease because of these increased tariffs and the increasing in affordability of new motor vehicles for people, so just to be aware of that.
So the motor vehicle is tiered, so brand-new cars are the higher. So the individuals who are purchasing brand-new cars, we are seeing it every day, will be at the next level, which we will still see an increase because most of those individuals were at the lowest mill rate level and then purchased new cars. So we will still see an increase next year.
Councilor Najin.
Just out of curiosity, the other licenses and permits category, so we had 128,000 as are projected. So far, we made about 89,000, and the increase to 150,000 for 2026, what, I missed, what's accounting for the optimism of seeing that increase of 22,000 in revenue on that line?
So we've seen more marijuana licenses coming through. That's the largest increase in that line item.
And is that for grow operations or storefronts, or both?
It's, I believe, for both compared to the code.
Hmm, okay, interesting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Glenn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. State revenue sharing, my favorite line.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to that section yet.
Okay, that's right, I'm sorry, I'm one section, one section ahead, I'll wait.
Yeah, I, thank you so much for doing that, Councilor Glenn. Further questions about this current section?
So intergovernmental is on page 13, it's increase in 218,737. An increase in state revenue sharing of 460,199, which is 95% of the state's estimated projected from February 3rd, 2025. The total is 12,454,239. I know in my notes I had 12,455,239, so that is 95% we are budgeting of their estimated revenues. Highway is 25,000, which is the state local road assistance fund, which is estimated to increase 6%. That's why the increase of 25,000. Increase in payment and lieu for the Frye School of 722. Payment and lieu taxes for Tedford House in of 505. This will be offset with a decrease of the general assistance of 238,700, which represents the decrease in the expenses you saw on Tuesday, of which the revenues, 70% reimbursement state. The L.A. Air Park property taxes are decreasing 24,000 due to one property coming off. State exemption reimbursement, 4,989, which is for the veterans exemption and the tree growth exemption are decreasing. Any questions on intergovernmental?
Yes, Councilor Glenn.
Now that I've caught up. What is in-state revenue sharing? What do we, I've always been a little confused, I guess, on what that, what that breaks down to and why we get what we get.
So they take our state valuation. If you go on the website and you go on the state domain treasurer website, you will see their estimation. You click on that, and it has all of the numbers that are used to calculate that number, and we actually have like a revenue sharing one and a revenue sharing two. Here, we just give you the total amount, but when we bring it in. total amount, but when we bring it into our revenues, we do have it split out by revenue one and revenue two. But it uses the valuation along with other state valuation numbers, and it will show, it will show you all of the calculations going over through.
Right. So I guess when I looked at it, I was trying to figure out what revenue one and revenue two was, because we don't have a revenue one and two listed here. So is there a difference between them? Why, and I understand you combine them maybe for simplicity, but...
Right.
What is the difference between one and two?
There is. I'd have to find my spreadsheet. I can email that to you if you'd like, the breakout of what is enclosed in revenue one and what is enclosed in revenue two. It's how the state does it for reimbursements for sales tax, and it breaks out. So I will send all of that to you by email.
I appreciate it. I know there's a difference in, I don't know as a group if we can't look at one and two and have a driver in a city, we'll talk about economic development and things like that, that we need to be looking at to drive one of those up or down to be more beneficial for us. And that's where my curiosity comes from. Thank you.
I will email that out, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure it works in quite that way, but yeah, we'll wait for Director Roy. Given the uncertainty that's coming, it might be worth it to check in with the state to see if there's any future guidance coming for next year's number.
Right. They usually will update, so I always check the spread, the website. So when they do any adjustments to their estimate, they put a new estimate out there. So I check the website.
No, I understand that the website is being updated as they, you know, make updates, so to speak. But I'd be interested to know if, you know, the latest news today about tariffs, whether there's going to be, you know, in some sense, a special meeting or further guidance, or if, yeah, I'd be interested to hear what their feedback is on that or potential plan. Counselor Chidham.
Thank you. A couple of questions. Remind me, Director Roy, last year, did we budget 95% of anticipated revenue sharing?
We budgeted, I believe, pretty close. I think it was like 92.5 last year.
Okay, I know there was some discussion about that and some good discussion on the council about what level of that we should anticipate, particularly given that historically the early estimates are lower than the actual remuneration. Second question is, are pilots' contractual obligations, or are those considered actually donations by the nonprofits each year?
They're considered donations. Nonprofits do not have to pay taxes, and they receive a letter requesting a donation. It's not required of them to pay us.
Yet we're budgeting nearly $64,000 in pilots.
Because these, right, because these individuals, these nonprofits, give the amount.
Have they committed to that this year, or are we anticipating that they are? I mean, is there a commitment from them to do this? Is there a request of all nonprofits for pilots, or how does that work?
There's a request of the individuals. There, when a nonprofit comes into the city, there is a form they fill out with the assessors, and on that form, it says, are you willing to do a pilot? Some say yes, some say no. This is why we always have these individuals, because they have already said that they would.
Okay, so they have committed then to these three individuals?
Correct. They fill out that form.
All right. And is it just a one-time request when a nonprofit first registers, or do we, on a regular basis, send letters to nonprofits saying, would you be willing to reconsider your initial no?
So it's only when they do it the first time around. I know this was a discussion last year. I would have to talk with the assessor and see about if we could send out a mail into all the nonprofits. We would have to get the list and...
All right, thank you.
Counselor Najin.
So just on that note with the pilots, there's, do we hold MOUs with any of the, any of the folk, any of the nonprofit organizations that contribute to the tax base through pilots?
Can you repeat that? Sorry.
Do we hold any type of like agreement or MOU with any of the nonprofits that pay a pilot in exchange for the pilot?
No. Like I said, when they first come into the city, they fill out the form whether they want to...
So it's basically like a passive, at this moment, it's a passive request for funding as opposed to...
Right. For their coverage of police, fire, public works.
Yeah, as opposed to some type of more aggressive platform that we could possibly use in order to encourage participation. The reason why I'm thinking about this, there are certain nonprofits that exist in our community that, like ultimately, we don't decide who is a nonprofit in our community. They buy a building, they ask it to be taken off the tax rolls. We're not notified of it. It just happens, right? And so in that process, you know, I think some are net benefits, some are maybe net neutral, and some are providing services for an entire region that are located in our community that also put some stressors on other public services that we offer. And so at the end of the day, reviewing some of these, some of these pieces and deciding whether or not we're going to approach them to say, you know, how can we work better based on the services that you're providing that maybe 20% of our community is using, right? But 100% of your clientele's needs are presented in the city, which, you know, end of the day, I'd love to figure out like what the actual cost for the city is for some of these services, you know, per call, per intervention, you know, pieces like that. I do know from a conversation that I had with the police department that we have some group homes that possibly call the police to intervene, not for criminal activity. And so, you know, we're using our, our public safety services as kind of like a mediator in these cases. And that seems like if the building is not paying a tax, that's even more of a drain on city resources without a contribution. And so I'm just trying to think of ways to kind of address the fact that we have a growing nonprofit non-tax base in the city. But I appreciate, you know, your feedback on that, too. Thanks.
Further questions on this?
Charge for services is on page 13 and 14. An increase of $50,500. Municipal parking garages are increasing $20,770 across all parking garages for hourly parking. Apartment building collections is increasing $49,130 for the increase in apartments that the city is picking up due to the private companies charging more. Zoning rebuilding letters, $500. Notary services, $100. Tests, $50, uh, $50, sorry. This is offset by an increase of tip and fees of $20,000 due to the decrease based on the new agreement with main waste to energy. Photocopies and Cessin is decreasing $50. Fines and fees are on page 14 and 15. Increase in $22,000. Increase in rental registrations of $15,000, which was a new revenue back in fiscal year '24. Code violations of $11,000. Alarm reset fees, fire for $1,000, offset by a decrease in false alarms. Police by $3,000. Interest and rents are on page 15. We're seeing a decrease of $308,321. Interest rates are starting to decrease slightly. Therefore, the city is budgeting conservatively in the investment earnings, estimating a decrease of $100,000. All monthly parking is decreasing $211,800. This is due to the TD Bank vacating their office space. Franchise fees is decreasing $12,599, resulting from the conversion of customers using various other streaming modes. Rent cleaning is decreasing $3,000 due to the fiscal year '25 was the first time budgeting this. So she is decreasing this to actual. This is offset by increases in accounts receivable interest of $1,000 for overdue general bills. Rent armory, $5,328 for more rentals. Rent temporary wages of $9,000, which is a new revenue breakout in fiscal year '25 for the armory to keep track of cost. Rent for facilities, $750 for renting Callahan and the conference room rentals. Rent for city events are increasing $3,000. Mislangianous revenues on page 15 is increasing $27,900. Increase in the tower rental of $6,021 due to the inflator factor, impactor. Sales in timber, $10,000. Unclassified, $11,000, which is increasing for the rebate the city receives for the procurement card purchases. Since changing the policy and allowing for procurement cards to be used for travel, we're seeing our rebate go from $18,110 to $40,836 is revenue coming in. This is offset decrease by a $12 in other reimbursement, which is the overhead charges for the school and the utility charges. Are there any questions on any of those revenues?
Counselor Chidham.
Thank you. 85 Park rent, there's nothing budgeted this year.
So if you look at the line, you'll see that the next line down under it...
Or above it, actually, is MDA rent.
Or above it, sorry.
So Counselor Chidham, we were receiving $15,000 from the state for them renting a pot of 85 Park Street. They'll be paying rent when they move into the new police station. I'm in the process of getting a new lease from the state at this time.
Is there, is there any merit in discussing renting, charging rent to the dispatch center?
Currently, right now, they do not pay rent to Auburn Fire. They only pay their utilities, and that's what we had planned on for that facility. When they're in 85 Park is paying all the utilities.
Okay. And is there any stomach anywhere for charging rent in addition to utilities?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I...
Administrator O'Malley, yes, please.
I feel like this is deja vu all over again. If we start charging the rent, they're gonna ask us for more money for their budget.
And they'll ask Auburn for more money as well, and Poland for more money. That's, that's part of the equation.
That is true, but we will have to pay more money.
If we have to pay a dollar more to get a $1.75 or $2.50 in return, that sounds to me like a good idea. What am I missing?
You are on the 9-1 committee. I guess you guys have that discussion and see how that would work if they're going to. I know that if Poland, would they have an option to go do another dispatch center to Lisbon? I don't want to price ourselves out of...
That's true. And I understand there are other ramifications as well. There are a lot of interlocal agreements between the cities across the river. And as I talked about during the airport, the different hats that I wear make it difficult for me to come down. And sitting here as a representative of taxpayers, though, if I'm looking at, if we have to charge 911 a dollar for rent and a dollar and a half for rent, and we have to reimburse 75 cents or a dollar, that still sounds like a good idea to me, except for the fact that it could have a ripple effect on all the other interlocal agreements we have. And I'm just wondering, is it better to let this dog sleep?
I would, yeah, I would agree with the mayor, Counselor Chidham. Yes, I would.
I definitely agree that this is, this is not worth pursuing at all.
Okay. Could I get a sense from the other members of the council?
Counselor Najin, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I think that it's probably not appropriate during the budget season, unfortunately. But if, and you may not actually be in that seat when we have it, but if, I'm just gonna mention this. We should probably have a joint meeting between the two councils to go over all of our interlocal agreements and so that we're all informed of what the actual requirements are. When we talk about some of these interlocal agreements and cost sharing, if we're trying to think of a way to generate revenues from it, a lot of times, these interlocal agreements don't allow it, and really, all we're doing is borrowing money from ourselves, or actually taxing ourselves in kind of like a feedback loop that moves money from one line to another, but it doesn't change the actual cost of anything. But I think it would be very valuable for both councils to sit down together and have somebody go over all of the local, interlocal agreements so that we're all informed.
Yes, Counselor Chidham.
I like that idea very much, and perhaps when Administrator Kenrath comes on board, we could get a workshop set up with both councils. You made an excellent point the other night on the airport discussion about the discrepancies and the disparities in some of our other agreements, notably the 911 and the water. My own feeling is that if we have accurate information, even if it ends up costing the city of Lewiston more, if we have an equitable apportionment of these costs back and forth on all of our agreements, that clears the waters completely, and it doesn't muddy questions like the very one before us, the 911 rent, with gee, if we do that then, and there's a quid pro quo. I think it would be a great idea to have both councils fully understand the financial impacts of all of our interlocal agreements and what each town, what each city is paying in excess or in deficit for its fair share of those services. So I wholeheartedly endorse that. And I don't know whether I'd ask Administrator O'Malley or wait until Administrator Kenrath gets in here to set that up for sometime after we finish the budgets.
I'm sure I can go on the long list of things that's building up for the, for the new administration.
Yeah, I recommend that we give our new administrator a couple of weeks. But yes, Counselor Glant, did you have something?
Yes, on this subject, it's kind of like tariffs, isn't it? My 10%, your 10%, we're all gonna be, we're all gonna be equal. I like the idea of doing this. However, I'd like a list in advance to find out what we're already on even playing field. If there's 50 of them, I don't want to review 50 if I only have to review five or six. Okay, so let's be smart about this and not have a workshop for four or five hours and look at every one of them. If we feel, when we get the list, it's comparable already, why open up Pandora's box? Let's just look at the ones we don't maybe feel on our side's comparable and then attack the issue from that angle. I'd feel much more comfortable because then we'd have some footing, at least footing we feel, to be looked at. That's why I was going with that.
All good points, and at this point, I urge the council to save this for a discussion with our new administrator. Yes, Counselor Najin.
Just out of any of the rents that we'd be pulling down from the new police station, those rents go into the general fund. Is that correct? Yeah, okay.
Yes, and there's only gonna be, the MDA is the only one paying rent.
Okay. So the ATF and the FBI, we just give them space?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions for Director Roy on revenues? Director Roy, is that about it?
That is it. Just wanted to question about, the school is on Tuesday.
Yep.
The 8th.
Yep.
I was just wondering, when would you like me to bring forth the LCIP for the utilities? What night would you like to start seeing that?
I recommend...
So that I can let...
Oh, sorry, keep going.
So I can let Director Gania know what night to be here?
Yeah, I'm unsure how long the school committee will take. I mean, if counselors feel like there's an appetite to handle that after the school committee, or just simply start that the following Thursday. Counsel, Counselor Glant, did you have something?
Thank you, Mayor. School committee, I have a, I use the word grave concern, because we're gonna be asked to approve their $1.69 of .64. And while we're trying to cut our own budget, will we have a second shot at it? Let's say we trim all we can, and we decide, well, we still need 13 cents or 35 cents. I just want to make sure that I'm not committed next Tuesday that they can just go away saying I'm happy. I would need to see it twice. My personal feeling, as I think I stated before, if we have to cut any individuals from our staff, I expect to see staff cut in the school system. I don't think it's fair to our employees that we have to do that to make a budget palatable for our citizens, and they're not having to do that. So are we stuck on Tuesday to say yea or nay, and they're gonna go away? Or can we, at some point during our process, as we do our business, be able to have a chance to bring that back and look at it?
So, well, after you, Director.
Go ahead. So you have a chance to bring him back. I believe the city clerk put his presentation in your box so that you can review it. And I believe in that presentation, I kind of reviewed it quickly before coming down. It states what the increases are for the salaries for each division. And so you'll have a chance to see all of that before he comes on Tuesday, to ask some questions at that point. But until our budget's approved, but just a reminder that this has to go to referendum for the school.
And before that, we'll be in a... And, and before that, it will be an agenda item for us to approve the school budget, correct?
You, you approve the, the school, you approve the full budget May 6.
Right, yeah, so next Tuesday it's just a workshop. Counselor, yes, Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. Just from the school committee perspective, I would say, so we're going to have the meeting Tuesday, the joint meeting, and then the city council's going to have at least one more workshop for other things. I would say if the council does want to, does want to reduce or increase the school budget at all, to just make sure that the, that, that decision is made as soon as possible because it's got to go, it's got to be reworked, got to be approved by the school committee again and then approved by us on May 6.
And I just, well, yes, Counselor Glant, and then, yeah.
My last comment would be to us as a body that we get ready to go into our first stab at the budget. If you have questions now about departments, you want to lower things, let's please get them to the director so that night they're not going to have to say, well, I can come back next week and give you an answer. Many of us have gone through the budget already, have some ideas of what we'd like to see happen. And I think it's always fair to our city staff and to our director to get it to her soon as possible. Not that there won't be other things to come up, it won't be all-inclusive, but if you got four or five things like I do that I'd like them to address, I want to make sure they have it well in advance. So, that evening when I ask the question, it's not like ah or I'll get back to you. So, I would just advise, if you like, consider that, that makes things easy for all of us time-wise.
Yeah, I would recommend the council provide that guidance and direction to Director Roy at the end after the school, the school budget presentation on Tuesday for the following Thursday. Yes, Counselor Najin.
And just to verify, are we not going to have a general discussion tonight?
Uh, we're not.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, we decided that on Tuesday. The other thing that I also wanted to, you know, remind the council, so we are, you know, we can provide top-level guidance as to the amount of school budget, but we cannot tell them where they are, where they should be making cuts. And, and I understand there may be differing viewpoints, but at this point, I want to keep all of our staff and I'm not, I'm not in favor of, of laying off staff at this point. Counselor Najin.
That sounds like general discussion about the budget.
I, I understand and we're, we're wrapping this up right now. Thank you. Director Roy, did you have anything else?
No, so I'm going to inform Director Gania to be here April 10 to go over the LCIP for the utilities.
Sounds wonderful. Okay, well, counselors, thank you all. Director Roy, thank you. Madam Clerk, Administrator O'Malley, thank you. Thank you to all the nonprofits that came tonight. Thanks to all of our friends and neighbors watching from home. Have a wonderful, have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
I think we should have made a nonprofit request to stay for the full seating.